Mrs. Spiler, may I have a call please? Mrs. Orkin, here. Mr. Painter.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mrs. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Wackler. Mr. Zepos.
There's.
Mrs. Zilkowski.
Here.
Eight in attendance. Thank you, Mrs. Spiler. Welcome, everyone. Um, I'd like me to make note on the due changes for the facilities and finance committee. Switched days, um, sorry, or switched days, um, I believe it was, and I think it was Saturday regarding that change. Um, is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Um, under routine approvals, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following minutes, August 17th, 2016 business meeting of the committee reports and August 29th, 2016 business meeting. May I have a motion, please? Second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Spiler, may I have a call please? Mrs. Orkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mr. Redner.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Wackler. Eight yes. Thank you. Um, it is recommended that the board of school directors accept the treasurer's report. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have, um, discussion. Uh, maybe it's just because I'm new, but I'm having trouble discerning every month what the actual treasurer reports is. We get a bunch of pages of financials and none of it is actually labeled treasurer's report. So I don't know if it's every page of financials, George, or just the first few from the business office, that it would kind of help just kind of going through that, if you don't mind. I don't know if it feels to be approved plus first pages kind of thing.
Treasurer report, you see where you scroll down.
I don't think I did that at home.
When you scroll down.
You got it at home?
So you scroll down, you see the financials, those that have general funds.
The general funds, that's just part of it. Alright, I know that the bookmarks are in home. Thank you.
I always use them here, that's why.
You don't need to know, okay.
Oh, we don't get them at home, we don't get them at home. Just get them here.
Thank you.
Do you find it, Terry?
No, no, sorry.
Can I help you?
If you don't mind, that would be awesome. And then, um.
It really helps, it helps me when I use that.
Yeah.
Then I can scroll down to various things.
Yeah. Thank you. That is good to know. Okay. There you go.
Is there any other discussion?
George, I know, hey, I, I think you emailed you earlier today and did you find answers to this question?
Yeah, I was gonna walk you out that night. I think that's why I'm not listening to you talk about it. I'm not getting the internet on this.
Okay.
I can sign the lady's phone. So lots of tools that do that now.
If you don't mind, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm gonna read it to you from my, um, hot time.
Okay.
He's right next to her. Okay.
Can you make sure the mic's on?
So I'll read your question and then, uh, your answer to it.
Thank you, yeah.
So I'm reading the general fund budgets, sorry. Uh, if I'm reading the general fund budgets, this is your question, if I'm reading the general fund budget status correctly, there's a good possibility I'm not. Our expenditures are approximately eight hundred thousand less than the last year at this time. This is great, but why the difference? So one of the answers we got is the difference was the board decision to prepay the remaining balance of the two thousand and nine bond. Uh, this was one type payment on that. And then under bills to be approved, he asked who is Kara Schmidt, PhD, and what professional services does she provide? Um, her payout was forty-four fifty. Uh, she is a licensed psychologist that did a neuropsychological evaluation upon a student. And then under that, the cadence mark all this group, and what did they purchase for a professional service of a hundred and thirty-six dollars? Uh, it's one of the district's four of you being providers and is the administrator of the district's employees flex funding plans. Um, this was an administrative use for those plans, four of you being. Um, then the two payments to Sweet Stevens, Katz and Williams, one was for fourteen thousand and the other for seventy-one. There's two payments. Um, the one was a month, the one, uh, fourteen thousand dollar check was for, uh, the year pool council. And the seventy-one dollars was a monthly invoice on that for that month, so it's two separate checks on that.
And what was the first one? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That was for the, the whole, whole year pool council.
Okay.
And the next check is for a new microphone. That's probably more. Um, and then when you say, and this is going to the treasurer's report too. Um, and Susan, was this your question? Which page actually constitutes the treasurer's report?
Yep, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then we vote on, um, is it just the first few pages of financials listed as business office or the thirty to forty-six, including the general fund food service student? So the treasurer's report is listed as the business office and finance report. And then, um, we're gonna be having the title of the report updated. The general fund food services and student, student activity account summarized, summarize, summaries of other check reports. Okay?
Thanks, George.
No, thank you. I thought I could get it for you. Thanks for, for letting me do that.
Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Spiler, may I have a call please? Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mr. Redner.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Wackler.
Yes.
Mrs. Orkin.
Yes.
Eight yes. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve payment bills for the month of August twenty sixteen and the city of financial. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Spiler, may I have a call please? Mr. Redner.
Yes.
Mr. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Wackler.
Yes.
Mrs. Orkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Eight yes. Mrs. Spiler, may I have a call please? Is there any other work, please?
So beginning tonight and going forward, what I'm gonna start before I actually did the reports or the meetings is just to share some things that have been happening. Just gonna get, turn you over, turn you off, so you can. So, um, the first thing that I'd like to share with you, and this is now posted on our website, is niche.com has listed the Wyoming City Area School District as one of the top fifty best places to work in, in Pennsylvania. Actually ranked number sixteen. And so they look at a number of different factors such as salaries, experience, our teachers attendance to determine those rankings. And so we also look at our academics, our safety and resources. According to Nisha, high ranking means the district contains great schools with exceptional teachers who are offered excellent support and compensation. Additionally, the ranking provides a confidence assessable of the quality support and compensation the district provides to its teachers. So I think that that's very noteworthy, February sixteenth, um, and certainly something, uh, to celebrate. So some other things that have been happening over at the Hills. Certainly assessing student learning levels throughout the year is something that our teachers are very tuned in on doing, but it's especially crucial in the beginning of the year. So the teachers over at the Hills in grades one through four have been going through the Fanderson panel assessments. And the results of the teachers' neckless assessments help to determine the learning levels of the students, but then also how to work for small construction, whether that's for remediation or also for acceleration. And then later in the year, they'll assess again, and it's really part of that continuous improvement plan to assess where students are. Our teachers at the Hills received an overview of various databases for their abuse, and this is really helpful when teachers are starting to do research into classrooms. And so they were given an overview on Destiny, World of Online, Pebble Bowl, Oak Flicks and also Capstone. Um, the Hills is certainly involved in teaching the black holes. And so they recently had a behavior assembly with students for their good citizenship, leadership and also helping directions. And certainly the fire truck was a bit of the Hills and the capstone building. So I'm waiting for those, um, pictures to post. Over at West Reading, um, very exciting for West Reading, so certainly part of their technology enhancement plan this year was the decision to give teachers the iPads in the beginning of the year and then the first half of the school years in a comfortable with the technology. And then we'll start introducing the iPads into the classrooms. So on August twenty-third, the teachers are part of a full day in-service program so they can serve in a comfortable with the technology. And we'll be following them throughout this week. They also are working on their school-wide positive behavior supports this year. And specifically to explicitly talk expectations of behaviors to the students. And their interventions to support students' habits into the qualities both in reading and math form started this year. We started mid-September literacy instruction started around September thirteen. And math review, reading sessions began in the end two. And at our high school, we got a great response on September fifteenth to the open house. Lots of positive comments received both that night and also through emails. A number of parents stopped and just said how proud they were to have their kids here during this. And that was just very nice to hear. Um, many of them said so glad their kids are here, they're open and they're house. So I think that's, that's important to share. On September seventh, assemblies were held at the junior senior high school. Every student was a part of the assembly. And this is to teach digital safety and citizenship. West Reading police were here, Wyoming City Police and also the Senate Bradley Law. This is something that we do every year with our students, to teach them, because it's a responsibility. And we're giving students this piece of technology, the expectations for the students. And finally, on Thursday, representatives from ECTC has passed those. And with a freshman class to talk about opportunities that ECTC has to offer and then complements the field trip that the freshmen take in that. So moving on to the current technology report. Tonight, there are no items for your consideration under financing facilities. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following financing facility items under financial.
May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question on number one. Uh, is the contract, have we signed a contract there or is it maybe signed for Red Hospital?
It hasn't been signed yet. So the revisions that we discussed in the last quarter, they will be sent to the hospital. It has not been signed.
Okay. We're just getting our approval and the government are ready to move forward with stuff in front of us. Are our terms, should they be similar? I think they are still under a prior contract, except there's no reference litigation because it wasn't. Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Spiler, may I have a call please? Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Wackler.
Yes.
Mrs. Orkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mr. Redner.
Yes.
Eight yes. And the personnel and policy, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following personnel and policy items, number one through eleven. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Who's taking this? Who's the other? Who's Sandy? Sandy's first, um, she's got it, it's second.
Sorry. Is there a sound?
Uh, is there any discussion? Mrs. Spiler, may I have a call please? Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Wackler.
Yes.
Mrs. Orkin.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mr. Redner.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Eight yes. Is there any old business tonight? I have some.
Um, thank you to those who clarified, thank you via email, but just so I can get it out there that I did in fact ask. I apologize for the confusion I caused at the last meeting about the facilities report, but I was just kind of curious. When things kind of get altered a little bit between a committee meeting and a Monday night, kind of how that transpires to those of us who maybe.
It's an alter, alteration. I don't think I would take as saying that we were going to rebid the tennis courts right away. And my response to you in the email was we are going to rebid the courts. Um, however, that wasn't as time sensitive because there were only two bidders at the rebid meeting.
Right.
And then two bidders that bid.
Okay.
Um, the conversation was that is that.
I agree with the whole conversation.
They're being a change of.
And I, no, that's okay. And I agree with how we're moving forward, but you're right, that term was not part of the, you're right, okay. Secondly, as PSBA liaison, I had asked the president that we kind of revisit the poster and the rules for governance and leadership. So that doesn't have to be this evening, but perhaps just as a point of reference for the next meeting that we talk about. Um, vacating our vote previously, voted Chris Heinley and maybe get Terry on to, into the mix for our poster review call. We all signed a poster and voted on rules of governance, and Terry's not on it. And I attended a PSBA event on Wednesday evening and the opening address really talked about these rules of government, governance and leadership. And that they're hoping that people across the, boards across the Commonwealth are in fact kind of using them, um, in our boardroom. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a point, um, to discuss, um, maybe vacating the vote now that Mr. Heinley's gone. And perhaps revoting if possible to get Terry in on it and hanging in our boardroom, just for future reference.
Um, I just, that, but, I mean, we don't bring votes on those governance items every time the board is put in. The board that was seated at that time voted on the PSBA's new guidelines for governance. So it's, you know, a historical record of the board that was sitting at that time. All subsequent boards will follow those governance guidelines, just like the code of conduct and standard over there. I didn't vote on those, you know, the board, I'm on a vote on those, let me just keep it that. I don't know that we want to start vacating votes that are sitting more so.
Well, it's not a hill to die on for sure, but I think it's not, it's not critical necessarily to district business than it is to our board leadership. So I just, putting it out there as something for people to think about, maybe we can talk about it in the near future. I mean, it's, it would be a shame if the poster up with Mr. Heinley's name on it and, um, it's not like. Okay. So that's where we stand.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. I have one more point, um, about the Spartan Stadium fundraising. Laurie's not here to address this. Um, I emailed this all to you, please don't shoot the messenger, but fundraising forums coming home in book bags, um, at the tail end of the week. Um, were not well received by the whole community and I just wanted to put it out there that, um, there are a lot of residents in the community looking for confirmation from the district that this is completely fully funded by donors. And that includes costs like fundraising and bid fees. Um, I, my phone lit up this afternoon that our E-Let, E-Lock system sent out a fundraising email to parents in the district. Um, there are a lot of people upset about that, that that email system is generally used for emergency closings, weather alerts, things like that. Um, no one has ever seen a fundraising, um, forum come through the school E-Lock system for drama or WAVE, like giving those glam, um, all those kind of things. So, um, just passing it on, you should be aware of the sentiment out in the community that, um, emails like that on that system are, um, not being received positively in the district.
I'm gonna address that because Laurie did email you back. Um, I'll read her email to you, which was, um, I'm wanting to respond to Susan's question about the fundraising flyers that were sent home. The photo copies were done off school property at the expense of the fundraising committee and the committee will also be covering the fee of fees or has offered to pay for those. Um, also addressed E-Lock. So we had, we had also heard in the community that papers went home, the papers that were paid for by fundraisers from K-66. And there was not really a way to reach the seventh or twelfth grade. And we were getting concerns that we were not reaching everyone fairly. So we did this. Um, I agree with you in terms of other fundraising things, and I think you can actually use this now as finding a way to have other committees and fundraisers communicate with the school rather than.
So, so that was also shared with me and I agree with fundraisers. One of the things that we've heard too is that it would not be communicated with the community. So part of this, also the E-Lock that we had done two last week with the elementary disposals reminder was part of that, making sure that folks were aware of that. So this was the quickest way to share with just an email, and when we care about that, if only an email was not any kind of voice alert, because we still are very sensitive to how we use that. However, as we transitioned towards making sure that we are being more communicative with the community, I think it's a great suggestion to look for other ways that we can send out fundraising information through electronic services. So that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about. So it reaches all families, because there may be a fundraiser in the high school that, that would feel and have children in the elementary school, and they're not aware of it. It could be, we're not using the E-Lock system, we'll come up with another way to do that. But we thought that would be a way to, to ask them, because then we have more opportunity to.
So I just have two questions and I can feedback on that. The one thing that I was concerned about with the letter that went home is it clearly states on there to make checks payable to the Wyoming City Area School District. And for people who are either new to the district or somehow don't know about the whole fence issue, it gives the impression that this is a school-sponsored project. And that kind of concerns me a little bit. I would think if we're gonna write a check for a donation, it would go to a different organization since it's my understanding that no district dollars are going to that project. So that's the one concern that I had.
I just, I mean, it is a district project. It is a school board approved project that we are doing. And we have fundraisers who are willing to pay for that. But it is a school board approved project, a school.
I, I agree, but my, my concern is we, we don't, we're going back to rebid later, so we don't have a final cost yet. Um, and the other point that I had was, there you go. Um, do we have a policy on what goes out on E-Lock? Cause I agree, it could be some kind of electronic communication would be a great way to get information out on a whole bunch of different issues. But I think we need to be careful what we allow to put out there, and that might be something we discuss in the gaming policy committee.
And I, and I agree with you, because one of the things with the E-Lock system is we are very sensitive. We don't look messages going out, so that folks are thinking there's as much as there is not. So this is a new situation, and as we transition through this, we just have to make sure that we go about that. Everything that is and is not, and does have eyes, like I wanted to make sure that it's great. We, for example, we've also restricted access to the whole district email so that there's a protocol to that. And so that's one of the central leaders policy. But if Mr. Painter would allow that, we can certainly can talk about communication, how to do that. Because I think this is an opportunity to be better at communicating with the community. We just have to figure out how to do that. So I apologize if there was any kind of concern raised today with that E-Lock. It was truly in the essence of trying to have communication effective. Seventh or twelfth students, it is not banned, it has been launched.
Okay. Um, under new business, we have two items. Um, the district videotaping of our Monday night school board meetings. So, um, if there's the will of the board to begin to have the district videotape, um, on Monday night meetings, um, we can start piloting that to see how it goes. Um, that way we can put that video on our website and so that people have a, you know, place to go to see our, our meetings. That is a sponsor spot. So it's not really something we have to necessarily vote on, but I just wanna get, you know, feedback that is something that, you know, I'll let's try. Oh, yeah, so we can all capture my slides.
Do you have to work my, um, two, Ron? I'll just take my tie off.
Okay, the other thing. The other thing we have there for your consideration, um, is kind of also in, um, a communications effort is to put out a letter, um, out on the table along with our agendas, uh, the school board meetings that would explain, um, the different parts of the agenda and what happens and, you know, kind of rules of the road for people who may not be used to following formal agendas. Um, and then the other thing that we were thinking about doing is doing question cards. Um, sometimes people, uh, use, uh, hold comment time for, for questions and it's hard to capture all those questions. Sometimes they're rhetorical, sometimes they're not. So, um, we were thinking about possibly putting out the cards so that community members can put their question out with an email. And then that way we have a paper trail follow-up, we can respond to those questions and get information back to them. And I believe that, um, you need someone, if you wanna gather some information from people, if you have any ideas, thoughts, um, for the question cards or things that you think should be included on the, on handout, I welcome it, anyone who might wanna smear that. Any thoughts on that?
I think it's a great idea. Um, in the last month, I've attended school board meetings at four different districts. Just to familiarize myself with the process and how other district city areas do things. And I think all of them have something like that. They might have a brochure with all of the admin, board member information, kind of a run-through of what happens at a meeting. Um, and then there is a, a question card for questions regarding agenda items and then also questions regarding non-agenda items. And there's room to talk about things that are on the agenda as well as things that might come up that aren't being covered. So, um, I do have some copies from the meetings I went to, maybe we could, um, come together and come up with something.
Yeah, I, all I have at this point is, um, I have like, I think it's called effective school board meetings, but I know samples of blurbs about the training cards and very simple question cards, so maybe pull these resources together and figure out what you want. For us, if everyone is in agreement on looking into doing something like that.
Sure.
All right, I'll work on that too. Okay. Any other discussion about the new business?
Just, just what, what I, we need to amend our policy on children's games, we should go on the internet with regard to cars and things like those lines, so it's not as fun as you.
I don't think that's impossible.
Fair enough.
And I don't think we do have, I don't think we actually at this point, but we'll make sure that this will be, maybe we need to add that.
Right.
And I do think, um, to your point about policy, it is an opportunity to put like on the question cards, if there's a time limit about speaking to agenda items or off agenda, you know, so it is also a way to, to help push out the policies when people are not aware of it. Policies are required, it's a whole, it's a good educational. Hi, um, there are rights and no requests, they're listed in the board packets. Um, do you have any updates for organizations, Wyoming City Area Education Association? AFSC? WAVE?
Just a reminder, she did last time, but it's coming up. So October fifth is giving go glam and a big fundraiser that will also, all the money is going towards a maker space card for West Reading Elementary Center. And this has been a great collaboration of a group of people and it sounds very exciting. That card will be in place this school year. So, um, that date, and then second date, WAVE's other fundraiser is a new one with Spark's role. And that's coming up October eighth, and tickets for both events are online, so put that up there.
Um, and I do have, um, Mrs. Campbell, the PTA president, asked me to share with everyone that the PTA has a new website that you can access through either wyeariapta.com or wyeariapta.org. Um, they are also looking for parents who don't have kids at the Hills to volunteer at the Hills Book Fair to work register for the spree of hours during the book fair time. So any parents in the district who may be chasing their kids around the Hills, they welcome you to run register. They're even looking for responsible older kids. They're even looking for responsible older kids to run registers because it's very busy night and, um, that's... Do you have a date for that? Actually, no, I'm a Hills parent, two kids. I feel like it's a Thursday night in October. Oh, okay, it's fine. Um, okay, if there's no further business, may I please have a motion to adjourn? Oh, it's supposed to say everyone wants to stay? Can I have a second? Um, all of us in favor?
I...
Hey, you need a turn. Sorry, I can not photocopy those statements, or maybe I'll see...